Oh. Okay, Mark, I guess we can go. Brad's trying to call in. He's in Sisters, so.
I'm not hearing Mark.
Oh, did we lose him again?
It looks like he's on, but I don't hear him either.
I can see him.
Mark, are you there?
Still not hearing.
Okay, you're good to go, Mark.
Okay. The May 11th, 2024 Sgrove School District Board of Directors meeting is called to order at 5:33 PM. We'll do a roll call of board members that are present at this time. So Mark Everett, present. Kate Granduski?
Present.
Okay, Brad Baffaro. Okay, Brad's trying to call in from Sisters, so I think he'll join us. Valerie?
Present.
And Narce?
Presente.
Okay. Great. Okay. So I think Brad will just, is Brad trying to call in? Kathy, is it?
Yes, I'm texting with him, so he's still trying. He may be walking around trying to find a spot where he can get reception.
There he is. He just showed up.
Oh, okay. Brad, are you there?
He's muted.
He's muted, okay. Brad? Well, let's. Should we?
Hello?
Okay, he's there. All right.
My God.
Okay, Brad.
Sound service.
Okay. Okay, so we're all here. So, okay, the school board will take public comment via Google Form. The link is on the board meeting page on the district website. A designated email address was also added, and comments received will be read at the appropriate time on the agenda. So now we have the flag salute. Would you join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks. Approval of tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do a roll call vote on this. So, let's see, start with Kate?
Yes.
Okay, Val?
Yes.
Narce?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Mark, yes. All right, the agenda's been approved. We move into correspondence and celebrations and a student representative report. Calendar notes. Is Siobhan with us this evening?
I haven't seen her tonight.
Oh, okay. Well, if she joins us in a bit, we'll have her do any student rep report. But at this point, Dave, do you want to go on with correspondence, calendar recognition, superintendent report?
Yeah, absolutely. I've got, I'm going to talk more about work share in the meeting, so I'm going to skip that part of it. Wanted to talk just briefly about graduation. There's still things emerging, but just wanted to kind of, the high school's been working on finding ways to celebrate our seniors. I talked about several of them at the last meeting. They're still planning activities for the actual dates coming up, but they will be virtual. So I wanted to just kind of go through what the current planning is. On May 11th today, they ran from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, kind of a drive-through pickup of chords, the letters from yourself that they fill out in eighth grade, and then medals all were being distributed tonight. We'll find out more about how that went tomorrow, but that first part of this is getting them their stuff. It's running like a drive-through, so it's kind of like the same way that they issued out the computers, is they got kids coming in through the loop, and then they've got tents set out upstairs. June 4th, which is our typical spotlight on success, they're going to combine the spotlight on success with the senior assembly to still do from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on June 4th will be that kind of spotlight on success. It will be a virtual, and I haven't heard quite what it looks like yet, but I'm anticipating it's going to look a lot like June 6th, which is the graduation. We will be holding a virtual graduation on that day for 10:00 AM. They're going to be reading of the names. There'll be speeches by the valedictorians. There'll be a speech by the board. All of it will be pre-recorded, though, so they're working on kind of getting that organized. But the valedictorians will still be reading the names of the students, that kind of thing. To be read in order, they're going to have to declare, like, you've got to qualify by June 1st, just because of the amount of time it's going to take them to get the recording and everything done. So they are kind of working through some of those kinds of logistics. And then the last thing is they penciled in a July 25th date as a possible date to run an in-person graduation, depending upon whether or not the state guidelines allow it. They surveyed seniors because they're still wanting to celebrate them, and so they talked about July, August, maybe even December, like during the break, which would be most popular, and this July time period was the one that they felt, the students felt, if we can, they would still like to have an opportunity to do some sort of in-person event. So we've kind of got it penciled out, and then we'll just wait and see how things emerge here over the next month or so. But that's kind of what we have going on in the high school with the graduation celebrations, that kind of thing. And I'll let you know as soon as I get some more information about the board's role and the rest. As soon as I get that, I will let you know.
Okay, thank you. So let's see. I think we're moving on to unscheduled public appearance. David Warner will be monitoring the comments. The board appreciates community members sharing information during public meetings. Are there any comments that have been received, David?
Yes, there's one. Let me just get into it right here.
Okay.
It's from Katie, and the question is, are we going to have normal school next year?
Good question. That's a good question.
Yeah.
So I think right now, the conversations that I'm hearing coming out of the state and the governor's announcement of last week, I think it was, they're saying that we're moving into Phase 1 right now. There's a framework out there, and Phase 1 is what we're currently moving into. It still has schools closed, and I think the limit on group size is 25, and there's a bunch of other things that lay out with it. Sometime, 21 days after we move into this Phase 1, we can move into Phase 2, which will have a larger group size. I'm anticipating that we're going to spend most of the summer in Phase 2. Phase 3 will have a larger group size, and schools can begin to resume physical attendance again. We'll still have to, there's a lot of rules here, both in Phase 2 and Phase 3. The one thing that she did say last week was that we would be moving into, we would not move to Phase 3 before the end of September, which basically says to me that we're going to enter the school year next year in Phase 2, which I think the group size for Phase 2 is 100. So there's a lot of challenges, but everything I hear being talked about right now is that they're looking at opening school physically in some form. I just don't know exactly what that looks like yet, and we're still doing a lot of work around, kind of, how would we do the social distancing? So I think the answer to Katie's question is, that's what we're planning right now, is to open school again in some format.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Dave. Any, no other questions, David?
No, that's the only one we have through the Google Form.
Okay.
And there's none through the email.
Okay, thank you. So we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine, non-controversial items to be voted on under one motion. Are there any items within the consent items a board member or the superintendent wishes to discuss separately? And if not, then maybe can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Kate?
Aye.
Narce?
Aye.
Val?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Mark is a yes. Okay. So we have a number of action items, looks like seven action items this evening. So the first action item is the superintendent contract addendum. You've all got a copy of that in the board packet. It's on the website. The changes in the contract reflect options that relate to SB 1049, Senate Bill 1049, which came online, I think it was January, or maybe, no, it was earlier. It was last year, wasn't it? And there are no monetary changes to this contract addendum. So I want to open it up to any comments or discussion at this point that anybody might have before we move to a vote on it. Everybody's had a chance to review it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and so at this time, we'll just take a vote on this, and we'll start with Kate. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to have a motion first.
Okay, I make a motion that we.
Getting ahead of myself.
Action item as presented.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, sorry, I got ahead of myself. So Kate?
Aye.
Okay, Narce?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Val?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that motion passes. The superintendent contract addendum is passed. Okay. The next action item is the inter-district transfer process timeline. And I think, Mr. Parker, are you going to speak to this a little bit?
That is, that is me.
Okay.
So two weeks ago, we did push in two things to you. The first one here is the timeline and process. We've adjusted it from last year's to accommodate for this delay that we've had with COVID-19. So you've got the process timeline in front of you. We didn't receive any questions. It aligns with districts around us. So I think it fits for what we need this year. Then the second thing that you have, well, maybe we should do the first thing, and then I'll get to the second thing when we talk about the slots.
Okay. So, yeah, so the recommendation is that the board approve the 2021 inter-district transfer process timeline as presented. That's the recommendation. So do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Kate?
Aye.
All right, Narce?
Aye.
Val?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that motion passes for the timeline.
Then, part two here is the number of slots to open into our district, and then the number of slots to open out of the district. Into our district, we have two slots at Dilly, and then we have one slot at Echo Shaw. These are students who are already. These are students who are already attending at our schools, and it fits, and so we're opening up those slots. We can offer that to them. And then we basically have zero right up through the ninth grade. At the ninth grade, we have 10 slots, and this is to accommodate folks coming back from the community school and/or some of the other private schools. We do the same with kind of 10th grade at 5 and 11th grade at 5, and then we have no openings in the senior level. And so that's what we're recommending, coming in, going out in our discussion, what we're recommending is 20. There's always some students who need to get to specific programs in other districts. I'm thinking of Liberty's Fire Science and some of these other things that we don't have offerings, and so that's why we're still leaving several slots open for folks to go out through. And so we would recommend this set of transfer slots coming in and the set of transfer slots going out.
Dave?
Yeah.
Are these slots at Echo Shaw and Dilly, are they staff kids, or are they, and are these kids that have been with us for more than one, well, once in second grade, third grade? Do you know if they're staff?
They're not staff kids. No, they're students, I can't remember the exact situation, but there's specific situations where it's better to leave them in our school with a stable schooling situation is what's going on.
Okay, sounds good.
And I just remind folks that these are the numbers that are, through the inter-district transfer process. There is also the hardship process, which is a different process. And, you know, it's just a reminder that this time next year, we may see more than 20 leaving Forest Grove as a total number, but some of those would have gone over the 20, those would be hardship cases. So it's always, you know, we always see more than the numbers either coming in or going out than what we approve, I think, due to the hardship process, so. And that's based on individual circumstances for students and families. So the recommendation is to approve the 2021 inter-district transfer open slots as presented, so I'll make a motion to. Okay. And I'll second it. And so Kate?
Aye.
Okay. Narce?
Aye.
Brad?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that motion passes. Let's see. We're on to the Forest Grove School District Healthy and Safe Schools Plan Annual Certification. And this looks like Eileen?
Yes, thank you, Mark. So tonight, we have the annual certification for the Healthy and Safe Schools Plan. It was from Senate Bill 1062 a couple years ago, and what this does is requires us to basically just annually certify that our HASS plan is up to date. Mark Hughes, our maintenance director, currently serves as the responsible coordinator for this plan. And then the second part of this is just to report to the board any results that we have had over the last year, from testing for air quality and radon. We have three tests over the last year. One was at Harvey Clark, the library. We, our first pass of radon tests a couple of years ago, the library was the one slot in the district that we had issues. It was mitigated, things were changed with the airflow of that library, and so then we did a six-month test, and then this last fall, we did just a quick another sample test to make sure that everything's continuing to run right. And this test resulted in 1.2 of the test results, and of four is the CPA recommendation, so it was well under, all good. Then the second one was, we did some lead in the paint test here at the district office for the exterior windows. That came back as positive, so it was mitigated and managed appropriately when the painting was done here at this last couple of months. And then the last one is asbestos testing. Asbestos testing was done in rooms 16, 214, 210, and 102, and this was done for the tile that's underneath the carpet. It came back as positive. The recommendation there was, in the event that we replace the carpet in those rooms, that we abate it. So that's what we'll do as we start replacing carpet, abate those rooms appropriately. And so that was all I have to report on this annual certification. Is there any questions?
So just, Eileen, the abatement of the asbestos under the carpet, is that, when we do that, is that, that must raise the cost of doing so, right?
Correct. In a couple of these rooms, we were going to replace the carpet this last year, but the amount we had set aside then didn't go as far, so we only were able to replace carpet in a couple of rooms instead of several, so we'll have to do it over a period of time now.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Other questions or comments? So the recommendation is that the school board review and accept this annual certification, so I'll move that we accept the annual certification, is it the HASS certification?
Second.
Okay. So Kate, all those, well, Kate?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Narce?
Aye.
Brad?
Yes.
And Val?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that motion passes, so thank you, Eileen. Let's see. Scribbling down here to my next thing. Transportation contract, M-O-U. Again, this is, this looks like this is you, Eileen, as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So last month, we brought to you the transportation contract, kind of temporary agreement, to allow drivers to still be employed through Midco and us be able to retain all of our drivers. And right now, what we'd like to do is extend that temporary agreement through June 12th, the end of the school year, to be able to continue to maintain those drivers. Basically, what this is doing is, it's, the district won't be paying for any additional services that we typically do pay for, after-school activities, our after-school buses, athletic buses, so all of those over and above won't be, we won't be funding, but then all of the regular home district routes and our fixed costs, we would then continue to pay at 11.45% discount.
Eileen?
Yeah, go ahead, Brad.
This is Brad. Do you know if they've applied for the paycheck protection program at all?
I did talk with Brian Schulberg over at Midco last week about this, and he said that they've been looking into several different options, and so far, they've had no luck because their funding, one, because it's as large as it is, and two, because their funding is from schools. So they're still looking at it and researching it, but they didn't have any luck so far.
So they have not applied?
They haven't actually applied, no.
Okay.
And Eileen, there's, let's see. So it looks like I'm reading there's 11.45% discount, is that, so there's some savings? Is that what, am I reading that right, there's some?
Correct. There's the savings from that 11.45% discount plus the additional services that we wouldn't be spending, we aren't incurring right now. I was just looking, for your guys' information, I was just looking at our February bill for Midco, and that was, that was about $330,000, and I'm anticipating the April bill to be about $230,000. So we are saving around $100,000 a month with this discount, and not paying for those additional services.
Okay. And it's, oh, go ahead.
I was wondering if you know how many employees that they have, and if there's a way to add into this, like an addendum saying that we would want them, they'd be required to apply for a PPP loan.
We have in there.
I think we had in there that if they got anything, that they would have to pay us back, but I don't think we have any, they're requiring them to pay. I just don't want them to assume they're not going to get it, so they don't even try. I mean, this could save us a bunch of money, and we need to look for ways to save money. It's just a thought.
We can require them to try to apply for these things, at least put their application in.
Do you know, what, do you know why they, I wonder why they haven't already? I don't.
Uh huh.
I don't know.
I was just talking to Brian, I'm not sure exactly, I know he was talking about them having challenges already and trying to, but he said that they were still looking at it as an alternative, just haven't gotten there.
I don't, I don't know that it's, Eileen, I don't know that, we applied, and all it is, is you run it off payroll. I mean, you just run your payroll, and you send your payroll into whatever bank you're using, I mean, it's not that big a deal. I mean, I applied for three different organizations. I think they should be required to at least apply, unless there's something in that, in those regs that say that they don't qualify right up front. But if they qualify for that, I think they should, I think we should require them to apply.
I agree. I'm wondering if maybe they don't know how?
All, if you're running payroll, then you, all you have to do, if you have somebody running payroll, then you can apply, and they have somebody running payroll.
And they just have to call the bank.
Yeah. I'm assuming they have a bank they're dealing with. It's a payroll and then bank, that's all it is.
So Eileen, what's the time period on this? You know, this action item, I mean, is it?
Sorry. Well, this would be retroactive to May 1st.
May 1st, okay, got it.
So I, but I can call Brian and make sure that they must apply, and if they don't qualify, they have to tell us why they don't.
Okay.
Right, so we could pass this motion and just add it as an addendum, saying you're required to apply for the payment protection plan.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. All right. So any other comments or questions before I'll make the motion?
I just, I mean, I don't know much about this, I'm just wondering, you know, because these are our transportation drivers, right, like bus drivers and stuff? I just wonder if they may need additional, I don't know who they are or, you know, what the profile is, but some may, I don't know, may not, you know, if we have any potential DACA or undocumented, is there going to be an implication for immigration issues? I don't know. So I just want us to be aware of that in case somebody is limited to not, I don't know. Just putting that out there, just in case it comes back. I'm just thinking about at Pacific University, even going through the work, the work share program, where, you know, it does have impact on like DACA employees, for example, with immigration status, so I don't know what would happen, if we have any DACA employees that might be driving around.
Eileen, that might be something to bring up with him, just to see, but I don't know that it affected the payroll protection program, though. I'm not sure how that would work.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're not even asking who the drivers are, who's on payroll, they just want to know what your payroll is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not asking who or what, they just want to know what your numbers look like.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds very easy.
Yeah. Not hard.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we add an addendum to this document that would indicate that Midco will have to either apply for the payroll protection plan, or I guess, give some reasoning why they're, they won't, they can't apply. I guess one of those two. Does that make sense, Eileen?
Yes, it does, thank you, Mark.
Okay. So that's the motion that we pass it with that addendum added, so is there a second?
Second?
Yeah, real, real quick.
Okay.
So I'm just kind of worried about putting in that part where they don't have to, if there's a reason. Like, who's going to decide if the reason is legitimate?
Well, if they don't, if the reason is that they don't qualify for that program, that would be the only reason I could see.
Yeah.
Because if they don't.
Yeah, but if they have less than 500 employees, then everybody can apply for it, correct?
I think so, unless there's something there I don't know about.
Right.
I applied for it with three different organizations, so all they wanted to know was payroll numbers, number of employees, and that was it. They didn't even want to know who the employees were, what your budget looked like, that's all they wanted, was your payroll reports.
Okay. Well, I, without, I mean, based on what Brad said, they should be able to apply. If for some reason that we don't know about, they can't apply, they can't, they're not eligible, then they need to let us know, I think.
Yeah. I think that's fair.
So, otherwise, we would expect them to apply.
Uh huh. Okay. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Kate?
Aye.
Narce?
Aye.
Brad?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that motion passes. Okay.
Put it in the microwave, just, oh, I'm so sorry, people. My husband's bringing my dinner plate, and I'm like, sorry, I didn't know I was not muted. He's bringing Puerto Rican.
No worries.
Dinner, and I'm drooling over it. I can't have it right now, put it in the microwave, sorry about that, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so let's see, inter-district, I'm shuffling between things here, so it takes me a minute, so safe schools.
Sedexo.
Sedexo, okay, down to Sedexo. Transportation. Okay, Sedexo. So this is Sedexo Facilities and Custodium Contract, and again, Eileen?
Yes. So tonight, we have the Sedexo Facilities Management and Custodial Contract Addendum. In the original contract, it allows for CPI and any new law changes, and so what we have this year is the CPI increase of 2.5% plus an additional $15,061.40 to support the Oregon Minimum Wage Impact from Senate Bill 1532. It brings the annual contract up to $1.86 million for 2021.
Okay. And again, administration's recommending that the Board of Directors approve the contract amendment with Sedexo. So. Comments or questions? Okay.
Eileen, this is Brad again.
Yeah.
So how does this, how does this work now when, if we have to make budget reductions for next year? In terms of?
I'm sorry. So if we have to make budget reductions next year, what will? what we'll do is we'll come back to the table with them, and if we're, for example, if we're cutting days, then we would go back to them and say, we need to cut X number of days out of our contract. So we're, we're changing the service level that we're requesting. Um, if we go back and say, we need to, you know, cut our services down by X dollar amount, then we're getting that service adjustment. Um, and then we'll come back, you know, so this is based on the, um, contract that we currently have in place. And then when it comes into reductions, we're really talking about the service level reductions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, um. All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll move that we pass, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, pass the Sedexo Facilities and Custodial Contract.
Second.
Okay. Kate?
Hi.
Uh, Narce?
Hi.
Uh, Brad?
Yes.
Uh, Val?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Um, let's see, on to our item number seven for this evening, the Funding for Public Schools Furlough Days Resolution. And, uh, I believe Mr. Parker has this one.
Hello, Dave.
Dave?
Uh-oh. Okay, let's try that again.
Okay. Not as worried there for you.
The, uh, this has been a really quickly, um, changing environment for us over the last six weeks. And in particular, this came about, I heard, um, in a statewide call almost about a week and a half, almost two weeks ago. And it's been emerging very quickly. The CARES Act and the Work Share Program, also known as short-term compen- compensation, have created a, a, a unique opportunity for districts in Oregon. The Work Share Program has been in place for some time in Oregon. However, it's not something that Oregon's school districts have typically utilized. Um, the program provides an opportunity to reduce the hours of a large group of employees and eliminate the need for laying off individual employees. We know we face significant potential funding, funding reductions in the second year of this biennium. And any savings we can accomplish in this current year will allow us to protect programs, services, and jobs next year. Our current estimate of savings is some could be upwards of about a million dollars, um, by July thirty-first. Work Share allows us to temporarily furlough rather than lay off employees. Um, we get to spread the impact over a large number of employees while retaining the jobs. And for me, the jobs we're talking about are actually next fall. Um, maintains benefits like health and dental insurance. And then it leverages, what's made this program more attractive to Oregon school districts is the CARES Act, the trillion-dollar stimulus, um, from the federal government, is now making, is assumed, that short-term compensation by the Unemployment Division. Um, the CARE Act shifts critical elements of typical unemployment benefits through July thirty-first. That's when this ends. The CARES Act offers six hundred dollars a week for everyone who has any unemployment benefits, could be as little as a dollar. Um, given the weekly maximum in Oregon for, um, UI benefits is six forty-eight, with the CARES funding, this increases the benefit to almost twelve hundred dollars. So this, um, change in the way the CARES, CARES funding coming down has, um, changed this program. Um, Work Share requirements, we fill out a two-page application, that's already been submitted. We submit, the employer submits a participation list of all the employees that we believe are, um, eligible for this. Um, we've submitted that. We're now waiting to hear back whether or not we will, um, whether we've been approved. The, um, only eligible employees will participate. Um, and specifically, that has to do with, if you're full-time, you have to work at least six months for us, or if you're part-time, a year. Um, our HR department and, um, payroll have already been working through to figure out who is eligible and who is not. Um, employees fill out an initial claim form, but from that point on, it's just the organization each week will fill out kind of a participation form. The, um, first, if we can, if we can get approved, this Friday will be our first furlough day, and that will allow us to take five furlough days with the entire organization before school lets out. Um, we'll continue to use furloughs for any of our twelve-month and eleven-month employees, but there aren't as many of those, so the savings will go down from there. But what this, what this, um, plan does is basically, it brings us back to about, somewhere around about a million dollars is what we're estimating, that we could push into next year to save jobs. Um, what we're looking for from you tonight is basically, we, um, are changing the school calendar for those five days, um, uh, and starting this Friday. Um, but, um, that's kind of the permission that we're asking from you tonight is, is to approve, basically making no school for the next five Fridays. We're still waiting to hear if everything's, um, everything's very time-sensitive here. We're, we're trying to hear before Friday that we've been approved. We've also got some questions going out to, um, the, uh, unemployment or the Employment Division, just talking through, like, when does this start? The waiting period was removed for all unemployment, so basically, it starts as soon as you, that you're applying. But there's some, still some, some really tight timelines that we're working with here. Um, and then I would answer any questions you might have around this program. We're, we're just waiting for notice back from them that we've been approved. Everything else has been filled out. Um, we've still got to get employees to fill out their parts of it, but we can, we're prepping that right now.
Um, Dave, are the unions, uh, on, on board with this?
Uh, great question. Um, they, so we've met with their executive boards. Um, we're, we finalized a, an agreement, uh, an MOU with the license union. We're still working with OSEA, but we don't have any, the, the, the MOU that we have with OSEA. There is no disagreements there. We just need to sit down and actually, um, have the meeting. Um, both unions have been meeting with their employees today, um, through question and answer sessions. And then we have a meeting coming up here. I think they're going to take votes on Wednesday, um, from, that's kind of the timeline here. And all of these things have to fall into place for us to be approved. Like, if you approve the days and we don't get an agreement, then we're, we're back to school, right? So I got to get kind of the agreement from everybody here. Great question, thank you.
So Dave, is it possible that because of timing, we would only, uh, maybe get four days? Is that?
That is a possibility, but I'm working really hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
Right, 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 I understand, yeah.
Dave, how many employees are we talking about for, um, that are not the summer ones?
Um, I don't know if I have an answer for that, but I would say we're probably, it would be secretaries. Hey Kevin, are you online? Just so that I-
Yeah.
Yep, so I think it's secretary buildings, right? And?
Oh, so you wanted to know that, well, I can tell you the approximate number of employees that we are submitting right now on the participant list. And that is approximately six hundred and thirty-five employees district-wide. Um, I don't have the breakdown right now on what that number would go down to at the end of the academic year, but I can, I can work on getting that.
I, I think you have, basically, most of our twelve-month employees are, are secretaries. Some of our maintenance staff, um, are not all of our administrators. So some, most, many of them are on eleven-month contracts. So I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can get you the number, because I, I don't feel good about, um, I, I don't have a good, I, I'd like to say we're less than fifty, but I, let me check.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you to HR, because that's, I'm sure it's a lot of work behind the scenes to be able to get all the paperwork done.
So Dave, what do you need from us tonight?
I just need you to approve the, um, furloughing of five school days.
So, so one of the things I think we talked about, um, uh, earlier is, uh, actually reading, uh, reading the, um, the recital and the resolution to have it on the record, Brad.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So I think I'm going to go ahead and, uh, I'll read it, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve it, and then we'll take a vote, if that makes sense, it's a-
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
It's just good to have it, I think, on the record, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I'll go ahead and start here. So this is the recital, uh, "The COVID-nineteen Global Pandemic in 2020 Has Impacted Nearly Every Part of Oregon's Society and Economy." Uh, Part B, "The COVID virus and the state's public health response will have a significantly negative impact on the state economy. Public entities, including school districts, depend on state revenue derived from business and individual income taxes and other state taxes and revenue sources that will be dramatically reduced in the next fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and likely beyond." Part C, "As a result of the Oregon governor's sev- several executive orders in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, Forest Grove Schools closed all buildings, all school buildings, to in-person academic operations and has converted instruction to a long-distance learning model." D, "In accordance with the governor's executive orders, any twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget funds that can be present, preserved in the current fiscal year will increase in ending fund balance that can be used to offset some of the significant budget cuts that will be required in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year." E, "In response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the U.S. Congress has enacted, uh, the CARES Act, which provides for an additional six hundred dollars per week for each week eligible employees receive full or partial unemployment compensation from the state. These federal dollars are designed to provide economic stimulus revenue into our community and local economy. CARES Act unemployment benefits offset the financial impact on individual employees due to lost wages as a result of reduced work hours. The CARES Act unemployment benefit expires on July thirty-one, uh, twenty twenty." F, "Reducing the work week and Forest Grove School District compensation by twenty percent, which is a partial furlough, for Forest Grove School District employees eligible for CARES Act unemployment compensation before July twenty-one, twenty twenty, may save the district the equivalent of between five and ten, five to ten school staff and other positions for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year." So the resolution is that the, the Board thanks Forest Grove School District families and, and employees for their hard and innovative work to serve students to the fullest extent possible during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The Board also thanks students for their perseverance, adaptability, and dedication while school has changed so dramatically. "In order to prudently manage district budgets and take all reasonable steps to preserve current budget funds for use next year when budget funds will be significantly reduced, the Board authorizes a superintendent to implement twenty percent furloughs through no later than July thirty-one, July thirty-first, twenty twenty, for all CARES eligible, CARES Act eligible employees as necessary to preserve budget funds for use in the next year. In doing so, the superintendent should modify operations to main necessary school district functions, minimize financial impacts on employees, and comply with the governor's executive orders. The superintendent is also hereby authorized to enter into memorandums of agreement with the district's labor part, partners to effectuate these furloughs under relevant collective bargaining agreements. The Board also hereby modifies the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar to close online instruction and related supports on March, on the dates of March fifteenth, March twenty-second, March twenty-ninth, June fifth, and June twelfth." So, that's the, uh, resolution. Um, the top was the recital, and, and the bottom is the resolution. So is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move we approve the resolution as stated.
And I'll second that. And so Kate?
Hi.
Okay, Narce?
Hi.
Uh, Brad?
Hi.
Uh, Val?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that motion passes.
So, I just wanted to point out that Eileen actually answered that question already. It's in the chat. Uh, um, the, uh, about twenty-four employees will have six furloughs, forty-eight will have seven furloughs. And then everybody else will end up with the five furloughs.
Okay. Okay, um, let's see, we're on to, uh, let's see, future board items and, or in board discussion. Um, and so it's open for conversation here, we, um-
I have a question.
Okay, uh-huh.
Um, Dave mentioned earlier, um, about the virtual graduation on June sixth.
Uh huh.
So, um, as a newborn member, what are the expectations for us to attend? Or do we have any responsibility for any of the pre-recordings?
It's a great question. Um, nor, in a normal year, yes, you have some, some roles that you play, and the board chair typically would give a, a speech of some sort. Um, so I've got more conversations coming up with Karen to find out exactly what that's going to look like. Um, but I don't have a good answer for what your responsibilities will be yet.
So Dave, can I ask a question? And I, I know you, you, you might not know this either, but it, it sounds like it's going to be virtual, which means it, I don't know, is that a, maybe a taped thing that we'll play? Or is it, maybe you don't know the answer to that, in actual, the day of? If we're going to be on camera or something?
So they're not going to do it live, which means like a Zoom meeting where you have, so it will be, it'll be more about a taped, um, situation. And the kids are reading and some of those kinds of things.
Okay.
Um, but I don't yet know what the role of the board will be in, in that. Because I think there is, again, we're trying to, um, honor these students and that's, so. But I don't yet know, I know it'll all be taped. But what I don't know is, is kind of how they'll work in some of these pieces.
Yeah, okay.
You'll let us know when you know.
Absolutely. Okay.
Okay, um, any other comments or questions? Um, if not, we'll move to adjourn here. Doesn't sound like it, so I will, uh, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at six twenty-five P.M. So the meeting's adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Goodbye.